Okay, we're on.
Okay, we had it all right.
This is the common council meeting to be held Tuesday, October 7th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. The meeting is called order at 7:02. Would you please call the roll?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Present.
Alderperson Bailey?
Present.
Alderperson Castner?
Present.
Alderperson Sarian?
Present.
Alderperson Akers?
Present.
Item B is the opening prayer. We have Pastor Steve Rogers here this evening.
It is such an honor to be here. The Bible tells us that we should give honor to whom honor is due. And I don't know if you guys know, but I'm gonna make sure you all do, that Bruce Bailey saved somebody's life just a few days ago by driving a tractor off of his chest. There was a guy that a tractor rolled down onto his chest and Bruce Bailey got up and other, he had stopped breathing, but because of Bruce, the guy is alive. And I'm thankful for Bruce and all of you city leaders. I'm very thankful for our civil servants and for each and every one of you here today. I don't ever want to be guilty of letting appreciation pass without sharing it, because I think that's the root of, I think that's cause and heal. So many of our societal hurts is if we would take time and appreciate one another, learn the art of listening. And you guys do that so well. You example, I pray that our federal government can learn from our city, because you guys have mastered the art of getting along and moving our city forward. And to that, as a resident in your city, I appreciate that and I appreciate each of you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for your hand in our lives. I thank you for the beauty of this particular city and all of our citizens and our civic and our civil leaders. I thank you again for our police and our fire department. I thank you, Lord, for the people that live and work in our city and keep us safe and keep us moving. I pray, Lord, that you would bless not only our city, but each one of our leaders and that you would keep them safe and lead and guide all of us and them especially as they make decisions over the city. I pray that they'd be cognizant of one another and cognizant of our citizens and that they would serve you as they serve all of us. I pray this now in Jesus' name. Thank you in Jesus' name, amen. And thank you guys again.
Thank you. Item C is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please try me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item D, I'd entertain a motion to approve the September 16th Common Council Minutes.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
By Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E is approve the September 23rd Special Common Council Minutes. Entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under Mayor's report, I just wanted to, did you really save somebody?
Yes, I did, yes. It was an unfortunate accident scene where a tractor rolled over a worker. And when we got there, Dave Patrick was with me and we got there and then the tractor was on his back. And we tried to push it off, but we couldn't move it. And so I jumped in the cab and drove it off his chest. And, because we had to do something because he wasn't breathing. And so we had to, we couldn't push it, so we drove it and drove it off his chest. And he's got broken ribs and he's, I think he's out of the hospital right now. But he's gonna survive.
It's not in Greenfield. It was in Greenfield?
No, no, it wasn't. It was, no.
Wherever it was, that's pretty amazing.
It was actually on a golf course and the worker was pulling this big tractor with a bunch of moors. And it rolled away from him. He jumped off of it and rolled away. He jumped on it to try to stop it. And it went, he fell and it went over him. And once it went over him, it stopped, he stopped it by his body.
Wow.
Ouch.
We don't want to be a break for anything.
No, no. So it's sort of a...
You've been in the news a lot lately.
Well.
Been on Channel 6. Your uncle, your uncle was your...
Be lucky that I...
Absolutely. But your, the other thing that you've been around is you were on the news, your uncle was your uncle, was a dive bomber pilot in World War II?
MI, right.
Was shot down and there was a wonderful interview with you. I mean, that was, I was very impressed by that. My dad was in World War II, so I was just, and my heart goes out to your family and your, so who was the guy in Kudahay? He was the...
My uncle's rear gunner.
Wow. Small world, right?
Yeah, right. The whole family was only 10 miles away.
Wow. Very impressive.
But Dave Patrick is also, he also helped. He also called 911. He was with me. So it was good to have.
Our former police chief.
Yes, former assistant police chief helped also.
Yep. Well, any aldermanic reports this evening? Announcements, does anybody have any? Citizen commentary? Patrick Lasuza's here. There's an item that is enforc, you want to speak during that? If everybody's good with that?
Is there anyone else in line to speak now?
Okay. Under item J, I don't have any appointments. Item K, one is notice of injury, notice of claim received from attorney Julius Andries on behalf of Thomas and Ramona Malitz.
This was referred to our city attorney.
Okay, K2 is adopt a resolution approving the settlement of the claim of Pam Akers, which is an alderperson. Pam, of course, can't vote. This is, this stems from an incident three years ago, four years ago?
I remember, I think it was like two or three.
Two or three. Discussion. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Juzwicky, second by Alderperson Bailey. Is there discussion? Would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
And Alderperson Akers?
Abstain.
Item K3 is adopt a resolution disallowing the claim of Thomas and Ramona Malitz regarding alleged liability relating to a motor vehicle accident on July 9th, 2025. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution denying the claim.
Motion to adopt the resolution disallowing the claim.
By Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Juzwicky, would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Okay, item four, so there's been some discussion going back and forth with the city attorney and I today with regard to this resolution authorizing the city of Greenfield to commence proceedings to vacate the unimproved public right-of-way for South 108th Street and a portion of West Carpenter Avenue. There've been folks that are, have, I communicated with my office that live nearby that are concerned about a pedestrian walking path that they've used for, I think one said decades. I don't know if that's a true statement or not.
I think it's even longer, ever since the sewer's been in.
Yeah, and how this would impact that. Talked to the city attorney and we recommended that we just, we table this item for a month to get a better idea of that. There's no reason to vacate the right-of-way. Certainly, I didn't object to vacating the right-of-way initially, but interfering with the folks in the neighborhood is a concern. Understand there's some disagreement as to whether or not people can walk on the right-of-way or whether it's purely for vehicular traffic or what it is. I just need to figure out...
Make a motion to table.
Motion by Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Akers. Before we table, Mr. Lasuza was here and registered under citizen commentary.
Just a little bit of history on this. Yeah, I got word from the attorney.
Let me make sure you're on, okay?
He's on.
You're on, okay, sorry.
All right. I spoke with the same attorneys this afternoon and it looked like this was going to be some tough sledding.
Did you say your name and your address?
Sure. Patrick Lasuza. It's 11750 West Edgerton Avenue, and that's in Greenfield. All right. My wife and I are the claimants under item four. In reference to paragraph three of the resolution, be advised that the city of Greenfield, on an emergency basis in the early 1980s, allowed sewer and water service with easements on the subject property. This was necessitated as every individual septic system failed shortly after the completion of the Holiday Heights subdivision. Shortly after, my wife and I bought the adjacent parcel, which is the subject of this discussion tonight. We paid the city of Greenfield a deferred assessment in the amount of $13,400 for sewer and water for improvements that were made along South 118th, a proposed South 118th Street, and West Carpenter Avenue for sewer and water. There was also construction that took place that affected this piece of land, this right-of-way. During construction of the Winter Park subdivision in 2006 and 2007, the city of Greenfield allowed the developer to do an overflow directly onto this right-of-way and adjacent to this right-of-way by way of a 16-inch culvert pipe, which is uptight against the right-of-way. They also changed the elevation of that right-of-way or the, of the Winter Park property that is adjacent to this right-of-way by several feet, making it very, very difficult to put any type of road in and certainly hazardous in terms of the amount of runoff. In 1990 and 91, I personally participated in the Greenfield Master Plan, not only as a citizen of the city of Greenfield, but as the designate from the Whittnall School Board. This master plan was accepted and approved by the Greenfield Common Council. The plan then proposed South 118th Street from West Edgerton to West Carpenter. And West Carpenter through the north portion of my property, which included this easement, and West Holmes Avenue. They were all shown as proposed and dedicated for street purposes. The document which originally dedicated this right-of-way was for road purposes only. Unless the city is willing to construct and maintain a usable roadway which connects the subject parcel to a non-landlocked roadway, my wife and I will seek summary judgment against the city. Please be reminded that the city purchased an adjacent 60-foot right-of-way a year and a half ago west of my property and adjacent to it for $225,000 to build a pedestrian The sole purpose of this purchase was to construct a walking path that would primarily benefit the Woods, a private development which is immediately west of me. This was all done without notice to us. Look, a connected street would benefit my wife and I greatly. A walking path has no value to us. My wife and I remain open to discussing terms for use of this property. My wife and I wish to leave open the possibility of reclaiming the amount we paid for, the deferred assessments, which were part of this right-of-way. I think it's also noteworthy that these same assessments that I paid were also levied against the property to the west of me. That's the property that is currently occupied by the Woods. Somehow, during transfers from estates and inactivity on the property, those deferred assessments disappeared in the chain of title, but they are originally there as prescribed by the city. I would suggest looking at those and see if their amounts due from those assessments for city water and sewer. I believe that that development to the west of us took full advantage of those, of those utilities. Now, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer it. I'll provide you with a copy of my statement here.
No, you can provide that. That'd be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Motion to table was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is approve application for a temporary Class B retailer license from St. John the Evangelist for an indoor event on October 17th, consisting with what's in the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Juzwicky, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six is to approve a, actually, items six, seven, and eight are to approve temporary Class B retailer licenses from the Harleys Owners Group for events on October 11th, 18th, and 25th. I'd entertain a motion to approve those items.
Motion to approve as presented.
Six, seven, and eight. By Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Juzwicky, you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine is approve applications for the 25, 2025, 2026 operator licenses, subject to all the disclaiming language.
Motion to approve, subject to all the...
Motion by Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 10 is discussion decision to approve a first revision to the final agreement, financial agreement, excuse me, with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the grant for the design and construction of West Howard Avenue Bridge. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Castner, this results in an increased grant to us.
Yeah, approximately $330,000.
$330,000.
Yay.
Brian Haas worked hard on that one.
Yep. So the motion was made and seconded. Would you call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item 11 is adopt an ordinance limiting section 8.04 of the Greenfield Municipal Code, adding stop signs at the intersection of Grange Avenue and Honey Creek Drive. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
Motion by Alderperson Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Akers, would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Just one side note that should be mentioned in the record. Because a couple of, well, one of the corners is in Milwaukee, it may require some kind of intergovernmental agreement. I would ask that my authorization to execute that agreement be included. So I'd entertain a motion to, um, open up the item again, to reconsider. Entertain a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the item.
Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the previous motion was to approve the resolution. I would ask as part and parcel of that approval that the mayor be authorized to execute any necessary agreements with the city of Milwaukee or any other entity with regard to the installation of those signs at that intersection. Does...
Motion to approve with amendment stated.
Okay, by Alderperson Juzwicky. Second, by Alderperson Sarian, she, would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item 12 is approve acceptance of a 2023 state and local cybersecurity grant program award by Mr., we receive from, through Mr. Lammers Friday. I think it's about $35,000 that we got from this grant, 30, 35.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second, again, by Alderperson Sarian, would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Item 13 is approve the 2026 special assessment rate schedule. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Actually Bailey.
Oh, Bailey was, I'm sorry. By Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
Yeah.
No.
Oh.
He just...
Mistakenly said you called it Bailey.
So did Juzwicky.
There was no second?
Bailey, then Juzwicky.
I thought...
Bailey, Juzwicky, sorry.
Then we're good.
Would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwicky?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Are we talking to me? Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Okay. Item 14, I think this is how it came from the Board of Public Works, approve a motion to keep Holmes open between 27th and 28th Street. Keep Holmes Avenue open between 27th...
And 28th Street.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. And study the addition of traffic calming measures such as speed bumps.
Can I make a motion to close Holmes Avenue between 27th and 28th Street with the inclusion of the upcoming project in that neighborhood?
You can make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Second, by Alderperson Juzwicky. Under discussion.
I guess under discussion, and I think everyone up here knows the correct answer to this equation. We can study it all we want, we can try a lot of bandages on it, but I think the elimination of the massive traffic on 27th Street would be a huge plus to the neighborhood. I think it would increase the values of the properties as well as safety for anyone within that neighborhood. A neighborhood of that size does not need more than three or four, but it has, still has at least four access points with this elimination. So I think this would be a benefit for the neighbors, as we all know, 27th Street is not going to get any less, hate to say it, violent traffic amounts and amount of speed and need to cut through neighborhoods in the future. So I would think we all know the right answer, but...
I, I don't like you saying we all know the right answer because I don't necessarily agree with what you're saying there. I was at this meeting and heard everyone speaking, and speed is the problem. But I think the majority of the traffic that people will say is from the middle school. There's the walk-through from the middle school to the subdivision, and they are inundated with those people every school day. And it's, it's bad. Having a middle schooler and having been on that road at middle school time, not that I pick up my kid there, but it's nasty. And I think you're still going to have the influx of cars because of those middle school people. And now, instead of having them come through there, and, and my proposal was to put in at least two speed bumps there during this construction period to slow traffic and calm traffic, because we can't have police sitting there all the time, but we're still going to have an influx of traffic, whether it comes from 27th or it comes from 35th or it comes from Edgerton. And by not addressing the speed issue and just closing a road down, my feelings are, we're still going to have speeders in it, they're just going to go out a different way. They're gonna, you know, bring it all through the neighborhood, the speeding. And if we don't address the speed issue and just closing a road down, it's still going to be a problem for them.
I too was at that meeting for a period of time, and most of the comments came that they did not know the cars, they saw them coming off 27th Street, there was massive speeding, and the high school, the school itself is only half the year. It isn't going to solve the problem the entire time.
Well, it's not half the year, it's two months that it's not.
Okay.
Can I just make one suggestion? What if you closed the road and you put speed bumps on the other three streets?
I'm not, if you need the speed bumps, I think it's pointless.
I, there was, I mean, half the people there, whether you believe it or not, were, because not everybody went on the record, some of them, the spouses agreed in the back that they don't want it closed off because it is, would be difficult for them. And I get it, because part of the problem is on Edgerton Avenue, we have those lights there, but they don't have a left turn signal. So people making a left turn there, it's really difficult. And I have gone there and come out because, not necessarily going through the neighborhood, but coming out on that intersection, and it is a lot easier at that intersection to make a left turn than it is at the lights. The traffic is paced out enough that you can actually get across and you can make a left-hand turn, whereas when you're coming from Edgerton, it's a lot harder and it's difficult to see with the traffic coming at you sometimes to see if you have a safe left turn there. I know Alderperson Sarian is familiar, because she lives in that area. I don't know if she has seen that, but that was a big, big complaint from the people, not having a left turn signal on Edgerton Avenue.
If the state does what the state does on those kind of streets, they'll probably make that median cut a right turn only and no left turn crossing the street, because that has proved to be the safer way unless you have a controlled intersection. They did it on Highway 100 as well as, I think, 76th Street.
I would assume if, since they're doing the construction on 27th, if they were going to do that, they would have done it now. And I haven't gone through it with the construction.
Well, I think this change is going to last a little bit longer than...
So, so I'm clar, just because we have to kind of, I'm sorry for interrupting, but, so it's easier to make a left-hand turn down Holmes than fully improve to Edgerton?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Yeah, because there's no left turn signal for them.
So, Shirley, I'll make my note again. Generally, to the best of my knowledge, we still don't have what I'll call a safe path going from Ramsey Avenue North, let's say, to the middle school for the kids going to school. Now, not to say that this is going to be the end-all, be-all for some...
Edgerton, not Ramsey. Edgerton, Ramsey is too far.
Yes, so, that section's never really ever been built, and even with what we're doing now with stop signs, the special lights that we've put in at those other intersections, on the east side of the city, we still don't really have a cross path or a crosswalk.
But there is an easier path there because they have the frontage road off of 35th Street that the students can walk up.
Right. So what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is if we're going to truly do reconstruction of that street and close this off, this also now opens the opportunity to continue the path that's on the other side of 35th Street and actually bring it and sync up with the other path that goes north directly to the middle school, one part, then also, we could also look at making it go south into the other subdivision where it may make sense and actually finish that project. Because as far as I understand it, at least from looking at all of our mapping now, we did it everywhere else except here, to the best of my knowledge. So Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of the day, we have an opportunity to improve that road, give the residents the walking path that they were asking for on top of that, and then it would actually be quiet in the first place, generally.
Which walking path is that? Is that, is that from like 30, 30 or something?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's that paved pathway as an example, right? But at the end of the day, the particular businesses we have on the other side, they're on 27th Street, anything that we can do to subdivide them from, from the residents of that subdivision, I think is prudent at this point. Yes, there's particular issues that we have to iron out to make sure that any delivery service vehicles or other things can actually get in and out of those commercial locations, mind you.
But at this point... How would those, how would, how would that occur, I'm wondering?
Right. So, at the end of the day, you know, Jeff's made a map, right? But the barricade itself is probably going to have to be set back 10 or 15 feet so that if a truck pulled in, they could diagonally get where they need to between those commercial properties. But for the residents themselves, there's already enough noise. We've done this already, last I checked, on 76th Street, on Holmes of all places too. And we've closed this off, and the vast majority of residents there on that, just as busy this off, and the vast majority of residents there on that, just as busy of a street, have been happy with that change, now, of course, this is still your district, on the other side of the city, there's still other residents that have their issues, but at the end of the day, I think this is an actual opportunity to do this once and for all.
And not because it's my district, but I'm trying to figure out what is the best, what is the best thing to do.
I see that it hasn't been done.
And I'm seeing that, you know, maybe the economically wise choice would be at this time, but I know at our neighborhood meeting, when we had this, I don't know, what is it, about a month ago now or whatever, you know, the, the suggestion was a temporary barricade to see how that would work, and I, I don't know what happened to that idea, I think it's sort of.
At the end of the day, we could still put a temporary one there until we build the real one, mind you, but I don't even know if we have a temporary one.
The reason for that was though, to see if, if that improved, and I know maybe now it wouldn't be the best time to see because of the way the, the situation, the construction is now, so.
It's great on Holmes.
Yeah, so.
I'm just, everybody has the map of the neighborhood, right, and you can see, you can kind of tell if the home, if Holmes is closed, Pam is saying that they're going to go down the other three streets, which are Thirty-Third, Thirty-first, and Thirty-fourth, so Thirty-first, has that been done yet or is that next year?
Next.
Next year.
So Thirty-first and Thirty-first could have speed bumps included in the pavement at the, at the right location, probably between Vogel and Holmes.
I think the people's concern about speeding and speeding on Holmes.
Right, but Pam's concern is that, well, if it's closed, they're just going to speed down Thirty, Thirty-first, and Thirty-fourth.
They'll still, they'll still do it down, they'll still do it down Holmes, they'll still speed on Holmes too.
But we can put one on Holmes, if you want to try how things work, then put some speed bumps in because they're pretty easy to put in.
This is the opportunity, I know, it's, it's the opportunity that we have, we're going to do the road project now, there's other improvements to be made to that subdivision for all of those residents.
It could be the test, test case for the entire city to show how speed bumps work in a formerly traffic-ravaged neighborhood.
But the speed bumps are sort of permanent, don't, aren't there those?
Permanent, the speed bumps are permanent, then you're not going to speak.
There are those temporary.
Yeah, we don't want, we want to do permanent, we're not going to do.
So we're, we're building, we're redoing those neighborhood, that neighborhood this spring, it's in the budget, the easiest and most cost-effective way is to do it during the road project as a matter, as opposed to after the road is in, coming through and say, well, you know, it's Pam's, Pam was right, they're really speeding down Thirty-first, so let's put a speed bump in, while you're cutting into a brand-new road then, right?
And the issues of putting.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry.
It was our committee vetted this problem, and there was quite a discussion about it, must have lasted at least an hour, and we had, I'd say, at least fifty people, and everybody got a chance to talk, and I was surprised, I think it, I'm guessing it was fifty-fifty split, some were for, some were against, and the people that were against said, I use, I come down Twenty-seventh Street and I want to turn into my subdivision, I don't want to go all the way to Edgerton Avenue and then go back, then go onto Edgerton Avenue and come into the subdivision, so a lot of people in the subdivision didn't want it, so the Board of Public Works, I think unanimously, I think you voted for it too, right?
For recommending that we bring the comment.
Yeah, that recommended not to close it at that time, so I'm just saying that when you have a neighborhood meeting like that, and half the people want something and half the people don't, you know, it's, it's going to be a close call, but I think they were fine with our decision to, to keep it open at this time and try other measures to stop the speeding, and it was stated that speeding is probably, we all know, the number-one problem in our districts, because people are flying everywhere, and that's just a problem that, that we have to deal with, more police presence, maybe more radar units and.
Jeff, briefly, do we have?
Maybe, and maybe speed bumps, so that's, that, I'm just giving you the background of what the Board of Public Works unanimously recommended not to close it.
And I have to say that the audience, the residents seemed to agree, we didn't have anybody saying, no, you know, you have to shut it down or anything, I think, because I was very clear that it's going to cause noise, it's, you know, but if we don't do something about the speed, we're still going to have a speed issue there, and I think they were all, no one I don't think was mad or left here stopping that, you know.
Was not.
That it wasn't being closed, you know.
Some of these things could be.
But I mean, I think afterwards, afterwards, there was a letter written, you know.
Okay, I didn't see that, oh, there's that one, that one, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Jeff, briefly, do we actually have a temporary barricade to close that street off if we wanted to, that's legitimate, that a car can't just drive through as an example?
Do, do we have, yes.
Okay.
I missed it.
I'm sorry, what, what was the question?
No, I, I asked Jeff whether or not we have a, a real temporary barricade to put there now for testing purposes, aside irrespective of what we were discussing, so that is a yes at the moment, there is a temporary barricade to put there.
Could still make the decision in spring before the construction happens?
And then the secondary part to that then is Jeff, when, what is the timetable for really getting that contract to the contractor within a reasonable period of time?
Well, they would start construction in April.
So is it one quarter in advance they expect the contract to, the end of the year, generally?
And we would sign a contract with a contractor at the beginning of, middle, middle of February.
Okay.
We'd have to get it out to bid before that though, right?
Yeah, but we can put conditions on it.
Okay.
If, if we decide to keep Holmes open, would it be beneficial to design the road a little wider so it can handle the traffic, because the traffic is there and it's not going to get any less, I mean, it'll get more even with or without the school, with or without little children, so maybe Holmes needs to be wider so it can actually handle that traffic if you want it to exit out to Twenty-seventh Street.
I'm just coming from the perspective that that's already a dangerous intersection as it is regardless in or out from.
I agree, I think that's a terrible spot to exit a subdivision.
And if Shirley's suggesting at the moment that we could at least put the temporary barricade up and just close it off, I'd be good with that.
And that'd be done like next week?
At least, and then if we're truly going to run a study or anything else, then let's see what the cars do after the fact we put the temporary barricade up, because that should be a very good marker then for us, saying that now that we've closed this, closed this off, what are the drivers going to do or try to continue to abuse the system, following through on what you've asked then Pam, that may give us the opportunity to also move for those speeds, excuse me, the speed bumps on our numbered streets through that subdivision if it comes to pass that we need them, ideally though, with putting that temporary barrier up, we're trying to convey to the subdivision, stop doing that, to start, at the very minimum, but then that gives us, all five of us, the opportunity at least to see some of these things go through in the event that they're needed, other than the fact that we're probably generally split on wanting to close it in the first place, could we at least put a temporary barrier up now, or whenever that may be, when DPW can do it?
Can I amend my motion to be a temporary closing of the?
And still leave it open for discussion as to what we need to do at the end.
Yeah, so for the time being, his amendment, I will second that amendment.
So somebody said there was a letter that went out to all sorts of people?
No, I'm sorry, it was an email.
So, okay, there was an email that went out to all sorts of people, and what did the email say?
Well, I believe it was sent to you. Yeah, I think it was, all of us got it. From Autumn?
Oh, I think you're saying, yeah, so there's one resident that after the meeting sent an email to the city.
Oh, that, I thought we sent.
All safety related.
No, we did not.
No, I got that email.
Yeah.
And she was, she was strongly in favor of closing, of closing it.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's not what I said, I wanted to make sure that we didn't, somebody here, sitting up here, didn't send a letter saying, yeah, we're going to keep it open, don't worry about it or something.
No.
I think it might, you know, if we.
So I think.
We want to keep it open.
We want to run the test.
Confusing to a lot of people that were there, so there's got to be some communication that's going to have to be made. Because we're reversing, we might, the board might reverse what those people saw us do last week.
I think you should probably table this. I think you should probably put this on the table too.
I think.
And I think we need to maybe get better communications out to the residents, all of them, to say, as part of the studying, we will temporarily be closing this, or we will be installing this, or we'll be doing that, fully explain some of the reasons for and against that came out at the public hearing, and maybe even have cards from the neighborhood that they should send back, which will be used to determine whether or not.
For crying out loud, we're closing Cole Spring down and all they did is put up a sign.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not.
I don't think you need to.
So the problem is that Julie and I get phone calls from people and emails about, well, what did you do when they said they weren't and all that?
But they did say the temporary closure was a huge option within that meeting.
So I think before we temporarily close it, I think we should probably let people know that we're going to temporarily close it, so on Monday, people will go, hey, look at, that's closed, and it's school day, and all of this stuff is happening, it'd be better to maybe communicate what the plan is, to, one, degrade a plan and then to communicate it, and then present the plan to you and say, this is what we're going to do, and if people want to come and talk, they get that, sometimes those meetings can get long, but then at least everybody knows and there's not.
I think what we could do is put a reader board up and say, this is going to be temporarily closed due to the study of the potential closing.
But if you do that, then all the people that use it as a cut-thru are going to know that too, that it's temporary, I think a, a letter to the people that got the notice, I think it would be better to do it that way, because they were the ones that were here, they got the notice because you sent out a notice to them.
A hundred and thirty, I think, a hundred and thirty or a hundred and sixty people live in the neighborhood.
Send ballots to them if we need to, or cards to respond, or we don't even have to.
I, I think if we're going to do this temporarily, that I think it would be appropriate so they know that.
That it's coming.
That it's coming and to plan for it.
All right, so then I'll go to this then, if we have a majority up here that are willing to put the temporary, or at least issue the, the guidance to put the temporary barrier up with respect to the fact that we need to appropriately communicate with the homeowners first, so we put, you know, whatever that reasonable timetable is on this and solve it now, and solve that now.
I would assume we could do that.
If that's, if that's acceptable to the rest of the board, can we do that, and then we don't have to go back and forth, fair enough, anybody?
Yes.
All right, do I need to rescind the motion on the table first?
Just, I think amend it, right?
Or just make an amendment to the amendment?
The motion was amended to have the temporary barricade installed.
So now all we're adding is informing the neighborhood ahead of time before we plop a thing there.
And that doesn't have to be in the motion, I don't, I don't think.
At the end of the, I'll formally put it, put it in there as an amendment.
Or put it under notes that, just that it's noted.
I'll amend my motion to include that it needs to be informed to the hundred and thirty-six residents that were informed that.
I think it might have been a hundred and sixty, but.
No, we're just saying, just so it's in the record, that it's on the record that we want to send a letter to them before it's done.
So.
And can I get a copy of that letter?
Okay.
As long as you guys didn't send a letter that I don't know about that, okay, so there's a motion and a second?
I'll second the amendment.
I don't think it's needed to be an amendment, just that it's noted.
Okay, so the motion was made by?
Castner.
Castner, seconded by Juzwiki, so that, there's no barricades going up there tomorrow, there's going to be the proper notice to the neighborhood to, as part of studying traffic patterns, right, to see whether or not traffic comes from different directions faster like Alderperson Akers discussed, right, that whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're doing, okay?
Okay.
Does that seem fair?
Yes.
And if it, if it turns out that it's more positive than negative, then perhaps it can be incorporated into the road project, if we discover that there's more speeding on Thirty, Thirty-first, and whatever the other one, Thirty-third or Fourth, then potentially we can investigate the proper locations for speed bumps there, the ultimate goal is to make the neighborhood safer in every regard and to prevent speeding through it, is that fair?
Yep.
Yes, okay, can you call? Any other?
I just want to say that the people, they were fifty-fifty and a lot of people didn't want it, a lot of people didn't.
This is to get, we want to do the test and that's what we brought forward, so let's do the test, let's do the test and get it forward.
The Board of Public Works recommended that we keep it open, and that's the way I'm going to vote, thank you.
Do you want me to call?
Yes, please.
Alderperson Juzwiki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
No.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Okay. I take items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen together, those are the typical finance committee items, they relate to schedules of disbursements, mileage reimbursements, investments and reinvestments in the financial statements, entertain a motion to do that, to approve those.
I move for approval.
Second by Alderperson Sarian, second by Alderperson Bailey, would you please call?
Alderperson Juzwiki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye, I did have a question.
Which one was it, what?
We really only had to pay sixty-five thousand dollars for the trash removal, John's?
So for the extra services that they provided, it was about sixty-five thousand dollars? I'm not sure if all the invoices are in, but that sounds about right.
That's all of it.
I think that's all of it.
Interesting.
Some other communities paid hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that.
We got to thank them, other than paying them that.
So as part of just not getting, there's no directness here, but their contract expires at the end of this year, and we're in the process of renegotiating a new contract to be effective January of twenty-twenty-six, so, right, we're going through the numbers now, it looks like the rate increase for next year would be about three to three and a half percent, that's what it would, looks like as a new baseline.
Is that coming to the Board of Public Works then?
I think it's going to either come to the Board of Public Works or it's going to go to Finance, it doesn't, or it could go to both, it's got to go somewhere to.
Go ahead and finish calling.
Okay.